Hello, everybody. Oh, that was far louder than expected. Turned up the volume on it. Hello, everybody. Lovely to see you. We're going to make a start. Oh, councillor Fuller. I was going to say we'll just wait for you to join us, but, okay. Before the meeting starts, I have the usual announcements. You'll be very bored of them, so I'll get through them quite quickly. Emergency evacuation procedures. So in case of a fire, a bell will ring continuously. If this occurs, please leave the building immediately, following the green fire exit signs out to the Assembly Point, which is by the War Memorial on Duke Street. If anyone requires assistance, please let me know, and lifts should not be used. Please remain at the Assembly Point and do not attempt to return into the building until you have been advised that it is safe to do so. In terms of facilities, the toilets are situated on the landing at the top of the main staircase and on the ground floor in the customer service centre. Anyone attending this meeting is welcome to film, but I should point out that only the councillors, officers and anyone sitting around these tables may be filmed. Members of the public should not be filmed, so please ensure that cameras are only pointed in this direction. And this meeting is also being broadcast via YouTube and recorded. When speaking, may I please remind the board to ensure that you turn on your microphone and to speak closely into it, although I don't think that's needed now because they're quite loud, and a red light will appear on the middle button to indicate that your microphone is switched on. When you finish speaking, please remember to turn your microphone off again. So if we could dive straight in, Dan, do we have any apologies or substitutions?
No, we don't, sure.
And are there any declarations of interest that board members would like to make at this point? No? Hopefully, you've all read the minutes of the meeting from the 26th of September. Can we please agree those minutes, or are there any challenges that we would like to make? Agreed?
Agreed.
Lovely. I can indeed sign this. In terms of public question time, we didn't receive any questions or statements in advance, so there's none of those. And we can go straight to the co-living housing planning advice note, which is being introduced by Jeremy.
Thank you very much, Chair, and Jeremy Potter, Special Planning Services Manager. So this item is seeking approval to publish this co-living housing planning advice note for consultation. And it's one of a series of planning advice notes that we have produced to deal with matters that come up, that are arising, that maybe our local plan or other guidance hasn't accommodated or met because of the quite recent nature of the content. So co-living housing is a relatively new form of of housing, in the sense that it provides shared living, but it doesn't neatly fit into any of the other definitions of residential accommodation, such as, you know, like a normal dwelling, or student accommodation, or a hotel, or specialist residential. And because it doesn't fit into that sort of conventional residential use, we have to call it, consider it as a kind of a outside of that use, which members of the planning committee or people that deal with the planning applications know that that's kind of a sui generis use, which means effectively it doesn't fit into any of the class, use classes. So the nature of it, it has individual rooms, and they should be supported by shared communal facilities, such as things like shared dining, recreation, some of the co-living spaces that we've seen have, you know, workspace within them as well, and maybe a recreational room in terms of ensuring that there's communal, communal living. And these tend to be in large cities. So where we have seen them is in London, Brighton, possibly places where the demographic, you have a younger demographic as well. And they also, the large, the larger versions of them tend to be purpose-built. So they are large, purpose-built developments. There can be smaller-scale versions of them. We haven't seen those examples, but obviously if you go to a very small scale, then you're becoming an HMO, a house of multiple occupation, which is different to one of these proposals. And they're covered by different policies and standards. So the guidance that is before you could equally apply to a smaller version of a co-living product. But I think what's important is that what we don't have is any policies that deal with this type of proposal. And because it isn't, doesn't neatly fit into any of the use classes or any of our policies, it means that we can't apply those policies to this type of development if this type of development comes forwards. So such as we have internal, minimum internal space standards for dwellings to make sure dwellings aren't too small. Well, we wouldn't be able to apply that to this type of development because it isn't a dwelling. For example, we have other standards such as, you know, garden sizes or amenity sizes. Again, we wouldn't be able to apply that to this type of development. Hence why we feel that there is a need for some advice from the council to ensure that we can articulate what our expectations are for this type of development if it comes forwards. So paragraph 2.1 of the Covering Report, it sets out what the the main sections of the draft planning advice note, which is set out Appendix 1 of the report. It sets out what those main sections are in the planning, planning advice note, and that covers things like the scope, the status, how the need for this type of development is going to be demonstrated, need and demand demonstrated, the locational requirements as well. And you'll see that we feel that this type of development, there's probably only one location where this type of development could work, and that would be in the city centre. And also, we're setting out some of our expectations in relation to contributions to affordable housing and design standards and the scope of future management plans of this type of housing. Paragraph 3.2 of the draft note, planning advice note, also sets out how co-living is different to other housing types such as student accommodation. So student accommodation, you know, is primarily, will be restricted to students, you know, it's university and they will have support. And that is different, a different housing product to what's proposed here. So there is no restriction on co-living, on who would live there, but primarily from what we understand from other examples is that it tends to be younger people, possibly finishing university, starting a new job and wanting to still live independently, not wanting to move home to mum and dad. So what we wanted to ensure was that this type of shared living, for it to work successfully, there needs to be sufficient space within these types of development to actually provide the communal areas and to avoid really substandard housing being, being built. So what we've used is, in the planning advice, is a reference to the Greater London Authority, the GLA's guidance, because as I said, they are a little bit ahead of the game on this, on this front. And that offers some, we think, some good starting point for the consultation in the absence of any local examples, to set out some benchmarks for space standards and some design standards. So they have been referenced and used with the, with the consent of officers in the GLA, I just need to add. So effectively, what we have here is a planning advice note which is seeking to bridge the gap between policy and practice and to set out the council's expectation if and when we do get an application for this type of use. So the consultation on the planning advice note will be undertaken actually early in 2025. So what we want to do is combine it with the local plan consultation. It's sensible for us to, to do that, so we don't have a separate consultation. It's much more cost efficient for us to do that. So it will coincide with that, and the recommendation is for us, for you, the board, to consider it for approval, for publication, for consultation, and that recommendation is set out on page one of the Covering Report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jeremy. Do we have any questions? Yes, councillor Jeeps.
Just one concern is that clearly it could, as you say, you want to keep a standard. I'm assuming things like fire risk and, and the way that the place is built and protected and fire doors and everything else are included in that, because you're going to have several kitchens in different areas and it seems, you know, it could be a recipe, depending on the size as well, it could be a recipe for a disaster. That's just my initial thoughts.
Thank you, councillor Jeeps. So, I mean, they would have to comply with normal building regulations, so all of normal building regulations would need to be complied with. It's just the planning policy is the thing where, as I say, we have certain standards in terms of size, in terms of amenity, that would, that that wouldn't actually comply with. So building regs, absolutely would have to adhere to that.
Thank you. And councillor O'Brien?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Just one question I have. That concerns a student accommodation. Is this policy like in sync with the same policy that would apply to student accommodation? Because I can, especially in Cheltenham, where we've got a lot of medium and small student accommodations, it'd be easier for someone to say, oh, it's student accommodation, and then use it for this, this type of housing. And it's probably very hard to please. So are they in sync? So it doesn't actually stop someone saying, well, you know, we're going to bypass this and just call it student accommodation and then just let people live there? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor O'Brien. So, I mean, it's actually fortuitous that we've, they've got an item about the Anglia Ruski University masterplan tonight, so. And you'll hear a little bit more from Sally in relation to the expectations from student accommodation across the city. You're absolutely right, though. It is a concern, and one of the things that we wanted to ensure we get in place is management plans that actually then binds any future occupier, sorry, operator of that type of living to ensure that they don't advertise that or market that to students. And because the, the issue really is that it's difficult, as you rightly say, to manage who those occupants are without having a really good management plan, which is, which probably would have to be secured through a Section 106 agreement as part of the planning approval. So that is set out in the planning advice, planning advice note. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, yes. I'm used to calling you Graham, forgive me.
Yeah, no, thank you, and thank you for that, Jeremy. I think it is, it is, it does fill a gap. But in many senses, I wonder whether there need have been a gap, or if you look into 10 years' time, whether there should be a gap that we foresee. Because presumably, we're always trying to raise the standards of studio flats and HMOs and supported housing and et cetera, et cetera. And in many cases, we do find reasons to circumvent existing policies, like gardens in flats and car parking standards in the middle of town and so on and so forth. So I just wonder whether you could give us a couple of examples of where you think the standards of this are going to differ from what you'd like to see as the standards in some of these other places. I realise that we need to keep working to raise the standards of other things. And I realise that there's something getting in your way at the moment, or getting in the council's way, in terms of building standards in HMOs and supported living situations and so on. And I am glad to see that there is a payment in lieu of affordable housing, because there needs to be something, for sure. And, and I can understand that that may need to be some sort of separation. But it's a bit uncomfortable looking at this separately, is what I'm finding. The other thing which I wanted to say is that I'm not sure I agree that the, that the town centre is going to be the only place where this is relevant. For example, I don't see why there shouldn't be one of these in Beaulieu Park, in principle. And in, in, and given the comments that you made about the size of these, the other major developments that are already in train and some of the others that will follow up, I don't quite see why there wouldn't be an interest from younger people in some of the other locations as well as the city centre. And we're always saying, good access, good access, good access.
Thank you very much, councillor Puley. So in answer to the first part of your question, I think internal space standards are the, the number one issue that would be, offer a kind of a convergence from existing policy for residential. As you know, through the existing adopted local plan, we were at pains to go through that process because that was the first time we've actually been able to specify the internal space standards of a home to ensure that future residents have good living conditions, which I think is absolutely essential. What I think our concern is on some of these schemes is that there may well be a speculative nature to them in terms of what you can essentially develop on a very small footprint of land. And obviously, getting as many of those units in as possible increases the viability of that, of those types of scheme. And therefore, without those standards that protect us and the coun, the council and future occupiers, there could be a tendency to have a situation where, you know, there is the potential for substandard housing coming from this. So I think, in essence, I don't think we, our officers aren't, you know, there is no opposition to this in principle at all. In fact, it could be a really good product and we would be really supportive of it. It just needs to be the right product. I mean, it needs to ensure that those future residents have good amenity and living conditions. And also, the whole ethos of this is communal living. If you don't have enough space to actually interact with your neighbours, because there isn't enough communal space, it totally defeats the object of the exercise and looks to me like an opportunity to increase the value of schemes by getting as many bedrooms in as possible and as little communal space as possible. So that's what we're trying to safeguard against.
I think you might need to turn your microphone on. It was a bit difficult here.
We have the right to stipulate the amounts of, of space that we require, one sort or another within this here, so that's fine. So we, and what status will this have in the planning consideration? Is it supplementary guidance, or is it going to be incorporated in the local plan, or what's the score?
So through you, Chair. So, so it will, the status of the document will be a material consideration. So it'll be a planning advice note. The reason why we are recommending this to go out on consultation is that then that gains weight. So we have consulted thoroughly. It will come back once we've considered those representations and go to, you know, formally, you know, through that process. The good thing about planning advice notes is that they're agile. We can do these quickly. And we, you know, an issue comes up or a matter of policy that we feel that there's a bit of a gap. But I must say also, we haven't actually had a planning application for this type of use in Cheltenham yet. So what I don't want to do is overreact and create a whole load of evidence for something that may not necessarily actually be coming before you or the planning committee at any point in time. I think we just wanted to ensure that our expectations as a council are codified in a planning advice note.
And then I just wanted to slip in just off the back of councillor Puley's question. So where the agenda, the agenda item says the only location in the administrative area where it could be acceptable would be the city centre, is that still the case?
Officers believe that this type of product would only be viable in the city centre. And the reason being is that what's been, what we've seen elsewhere is that people, occupiers of this property need to have not just transport, but transport is very important to them. It's all the services, facilities in, in very close proximity to them. Because don't forget, they're not living in a conventional home where they have all of the services and facilities that a conventional home would be. They will be going, they're similar to a student, using all the facilities and services, cafes, restaurants, whatever, in the facility. And therefore, we think that actually what you, you wouldn't want to put that in a place where you just don't have those services and facilities. And the city centre feels to us to be the right locational, the right location.
Thank you. Councillor Deakin?
Thank you. I know I'm looking at a tiny, little, minute detail. Annex 1, Table 3.2, laundry and drying facilities. One washer, one dryer per 35 residents? That's just crazy. I mean, even in sheltered accommodation or, you know, retirement projects, they have at least four washing machines and four dryers for roughly the same amount of residents. So where did that figure come from?
That comes from, you know, the Greater London Guide and their benchmark.
They don't wash in London, obviously.
I, I think, I think the issue, sorry, through you, Chair, sorry. So I think, I think the issue really is that it's difficult to work, work these kinds of standards out because it's a completely new product. And it is, and actually, you know, in terms of, you know, a laund, you know, if you think of a laundrette, you know, how many, how many washers and dryers are in a laundrette going all day? You know, they, they probably service, you know, a significant amount of people. So it's difficult to, 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 to look at those. These are benchmarks, by the way. And I suppose it's the purpose of the consultation as well. If, if there are local matters that people can flush out and, and provide to us, then obviously we will consider that. But we just had to start somewhere sensible, and that was the only, that was the sense, the most sensible benchmark that we had. Thank you.
I'm conscious that councillor Sotchen had his hand up after councillor Deacon, and then councillor Thorpaps, and then I think councillor Young.
Thank you, Chair. It's actually to, well, it is to expand on the point of Graham, so it might be better to come about this other locations. Because in my mind, the Southwood and Ferrars central area could be described as having significant facilities, probably and quite close to a railway station. Possibly unlikely for a new one to be there, but certainly my understanding of the garden communities, they would have all these facilities there and would be elements, particularly the new ones we're thinking of, rather than the Beaulieu Park, where they're probably already set out, so there might not, might be not quite enough. But also relatively close to the railway stations. I mean, for young people fit walking, say, two or three miles, or certainly cycling. So I would have thought particularly the garden community, if it's going to have all this stuff, as I understand it will do, would be suitable.
Well, I mean firstly, through the consultation, we can ask the question, do you think there are other locations that you think are suitable locations? And, you know, people might come forwards with suggestions on that front. I do think, you know, there are, my feeling is that there are certain, I'm not even sure if the city centre at this stage actually has enough services and facilities to support one of these co-living products, because as I say, it has been the bigger metropolitan areas across the country that have been able to provide these. And there are not that many of those, actually. So I would suggest that probably the best, the, the best opportunity is to actually, you know, if we did get one of these, is to test it in the town, in the city centre. But again, we can ask the question, you know, through the consultation. I think parking is another issue, you know. Parking, we wouldn't be, parking standards wouldn't be applied in the same way as they do for residential. If we are in a, you know, a quite a remote area, there won't be parking. And I would imagine quite a lot of these residents, you know, if you were in, in Southwood and Ferrars, or even at the garden community, you want to want some form of parking. So I think my view is that the city centre is, is the right location, potentially. It's the right location, but we can ask the question through the consultation.
Thank you, Jeremy. So we've got councillor Thorpaps, oh, councillor Young, councillor Fuller.
Thank, thank you, Chair. Looking at some of the reviews online for, for co-living, I must admit it's not something I was really aware of before, before the paper. A lot of the reviews, they talk about the space limitations, which we've already talked about, but they also talk about bullying and, you know, because these are younger people, potentially vulnerable people as well. So what responsibility would the council have, what potential liability, given that they, they're likely to be younger people, females, vulnerable people, possibly even people with disabilities as well? What, what sort of, you know, safe, in terms of safeguarding, what, what can the council offer on that front? Thank you.
I suppose it isn't a council-run premises. So this is, these are privately run, just to be clear about that. I do share some of the concerns that councillor Thorpaps has noted. And I think that's the reason why we wanted to set out some benchmarks, space standards, and also to go into the point that councillor O'Brien said. We want to ensure that there's management plans that are enforceable on these, on these types of development. management plans that are enforceable on these, on these types of development. In the absence of this planning advice note, what we have is pretty much a blank sheet of paper. And I think that's why we just wanted to codify some of those expectations within this planning advice note. But, I mean, my understanding is that it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be any different to any kind of responsibility of the council, but I don't know if one, Keith Dickinson wants to come in.
So this is solely intended to deal with the planning aspects of things. So obviously, the housing standards team have got a number of responsibilities in terms of living standards and that, whether that's HMOs, which are licensed and other, you know, housing situations, you know, dealing with landlords and such like. So I think it's, you know, the things that you're flagging up are probably beyond the scope of what you've got, you know, in front of you, which just deals with the planning side. And obviously, those issues about safeguarding, the council does hold some responsibilities. And they're in the community safety framework. How far they extend, you know, depends on the nature of the, the premises, because as Jeremy said, they'll, you know, be privately operated, so they'll be not dissimilar to a private residence in terms of if we get safeguarding reports, there's a mechanism in place, you know, to deal with that with the appropriate agencies. So I think that's how, that's how it will be dealt with. I don't think you can expect the, it's planning, you know, advice note to be able to deal with all of those issues, you know, particularly the housing, you know, standards issues.
You can come back, yeah, sure.
Yeah, I appreciate it's slightly uncharted territory, isn't it? Because the nature of these premises and the communal facilities does mean that there is an increased risk, it seems to me, where you have vulnerable and young adults who are expecting to live here. And that, I think that's been borne out in some examples in London as well. Appreciate we're talking about planning here, so it's, but I just, I wondered if that could be part of the, part of the consultation or part of the discussion around that. Thank you.
I think we've probably answered that quite well, unless you feel that there's more that you'd be able to add.
I think in the management, in the, in the management section of the planning advice note, we do allude to some of the issues that you've, you've raised there, councillor Thorpaps. And again, you know, we seek further feedback via the consultation.
Thank you. Councillor Young, you had a question?
Thank you, Chair. This might be more me thinking out loud than necessarily a question. I think if I've got this right, this is not us as a city council wanting to promote co-living. This is about protecting our planning regulations and to any future residents to ensure that, should this come forward, we have a framework in which we can refuse, if necessary, an application based on these standards, but be able to ensure that we're getting the best possible solution from any planning coming forward. Because, I mean, one of the things that concerns me, of course, that there's no outside space defined within these, which is why you're looking at city centre provision. And, you know, I would hope that we could provide a variety of other housing facilities that are far better than this, but recognising why, in certain very congested built-up areas in major cities, why it may be being considered. But I think it's right that we should have this, we should go out to consultation with this advice, so we have it available should something come forward. So I would be supporting the consultation.
Thank you, councillor Young. I feel like that would be a lovely segue into the recommendations, but I am conscious that councillor Fuller did have his hand up. So if we could have your, your question, councillor Fuller, and then possibly move to the recommendations.
I think I have three questions.
Oh, no, I don't know if I could promise you three, but give, have a go.
Did, did you say earlier that these are not considered dwellings? That's correct. They're not C3, so use class C3 is a dwelling and these aren't dwellings.
So what are they?
They are a, so a dwelling is a self-contained dwelling house. And that can be a flat, that could be a house, it could probably be other self-contained entities, but what it does have to have is, you know, the facilities that you would expect to have in a self-contained unit. So normally, it has, you know, its own front door, that's a good, that's a good indication of, of a, of a self-contained unit. And it would normally have a kitchen, you know, a bathroom, bedrooms to be a dwelling. These don't, this is a room, basically, a room within a block with shared facilities. So it isn't a dwelling.
And this, this room, are we setting minimum standards for it or not?
So the standards that are within the benchmark of Annex One, we're setting out some minimum standards within, within that in terms of the overall, the overall expectation within those blocks. So for example, within the private unit, we're saying that, you know, you should be able to fit a double bed, a desk, work-type space, you know, bedside cabinets and wardrobe, a seating area, you know, even a dining area, small dining area, and also potentially a small kitchenette as well. So these are in between a studio, flat, which would be considered a dwelling and a room. So I suppose that's the, that's, that's the uncharted territory that we're talking about at the moment.
So i- is four square metres, to me, that seems very small. Are, are we sort of, and going on from councillor Deakin's point, are we, by putting in the London guidance, are we sort of heading to the lowest common denominator rather than, perhaps, should we not be pushing them up a bit, rather than accepting these ones from London?
So four square metres isn't the actual size of the unit, that's the size per unit of the internal community amenity space that should be provided in the whole block. So if you think that, you know, there'd be some seating area, there'd be a communal area associated with the room, what we're saying is that for every resident, up to a hundred residents, they should, each resident should have at least four square metres, and that's combined into a communal area. So it's, it's a benchmark to ensure that the communal space within these blocks aggregate into something meaningful and not, you know, very small areas for people to perch in their dining space or any other communal area.
I think I'm heading to four questions.
So just so I'm clear on what you've just said, the four square metres per resident isn't the tiny box of which they live in, it's their proportion of the bigger shared space, which feels far more reasonable. Can I limit you to just one more question, because we do have other items to go through?
Can I have a two A or three A? So are we setting a minimum standard for the room or not?
No, we're not setting the actual floor space.
Should we not be setting a standard for the room?
I think that's difficult to do in the sense of actually being able to set out how that actually works in practice. I think what we can do is through the consultation, we can ask that, again, we can ask that question. I think the, the issue is that we do not have a policy that says that you have to be a, a certain space. The better way of doing it is to say, these are the criteria that you need to actually deal with within that space. And providing you can do that, then that would suffice in terms of the internal space within these rooms. We do not have a space standard to say it has to be X, you know, twenty square metres, ten square metres. But again, we can look at that in relation to this process. And if we feel that there is a, there is a good benchmark, I think the other thing to note is that we don't have our own evidence base to support, to support this, because we haven't had one of these. So we are slightly in the dark and in a vacuum in relation to some of those standards. But I do think that the standards set out in Annex One provide a good starting point for the consultation.
And I think it, it seems like, am I right in thinking from table 3.5, that you're not mandating space, but you're mandating items within that space, which gives an indication of you can't really fit an armchair, storage space and whatever into a metre by a metre. So rather than giving actual numbers, you're giving what people need to live within that space.
I think the good people of Japan would probably...
They're very storage efficient, that's true.
Come up with, anyway, moving on to my last question. So do these have a category? So if, for, if it fails and it doesn't attract the people they want, can we stop it becoming a hostel or another use or not?
Well, it can't be, a hostel has its own use class. So any sui generis use, which as, as I said right at the beginning, would require planning permission to change it from a sui generis use. So I think it becomes difficult, because I think it's precisely the, the issues that councillor Thorpaps said, in terms of how you manage that. And that's why we are keen to ensure that we hel, we hold any operator sort of legally responsible for how they manage these units, because we have the same concerns as I think you're alluding to, that if, if it doesn't, if it didn't actually attract the clientele that possibly it was marketed for, you know, operators aren't going to want us to have a building sitting empty, they're obviously look at other options. And that is something that we're mindful of in terms of how we grant planning permission for those, to make sure that there's a legally enforceable mechanism for us to monitor that type of use.
That was a tie. I'll say councillor, oh, councillor Walsh and then councillor Whitehead.
Sorry, thank you, Chair. I just had a question on post the consultation periods, because I do agree with what councillor Young said, it should go out for consultation. But the comments that come back, would this, will this report come back to Policy Board with any updates that have come through from the consultation?
The normal route is that it would, we would consider the consultation responses and then that final version would go to Cabinet for, for recommendation for approval. That would be the normal route on these type of documents.
Councillor Whitehead.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. We seem to be setting up consulting on things that are so nebulous, as councillor Fuller was saying really, that it can't be worth doing. We're, we're telling people where they can have them, but not how many washing machines they can have, there's no sizes put down. Surely we should be laying down what we want and consulting on it, instead of going out, it seems to me, asking people what they want and for us to go straight back to Cabinet, as was just told, for it to be agreed or not. Is that really worth, I mean, it's, my son was in a student accommodation block like that that was built, you know, the built-in shower in a corner, all that sort of stuff, really. And this seems entirely the same, as far as I can see. We, we seem to be preparing for something that isn't happening, in the hope that when it does happen, we've got a policy. But our policy seems so vague that I'm not sure that I understand it. And I think you also made the point, are we actually sort of going out, flying a kite so that people can come and start these things up, really, which is the last thing, I guess, that any of us would want to see. So should we not be tightening up the parameters that we're consulting on? We always do that for everything else that we do, room sizes and so on especially. It does seem that as it stands, I mean, I can't see the point of, of going out on a nebulous consultation and then coming back and saying, oh, well, we can amend it a bit here and there. Because all of our views tonight, I'm not sure, are actually in favour of much of this. And I'm not going to call a vote on it, but it does seem to me that we should be rethinking it before we actually go out for consultation.
Could I clarify your question? Because I just wanted to make sure I followed. So you're saying that it's something that we don't have much need currently to produce, but we should be producing a really detailed policy version? I'm not quite sure whether you're saying we should do it at all or we should have a really full version.
I'm not sure entirely that we should be doing it at all, but if we're doing it, we should do it properly and we should set our minimums that we are asking for, rather than ask the public what they think they want.
I understand, thank you. Jeremy?
Thank you. So this isn't completely in a vacuum. We have had inquiries from operators and, you know, that has gone through pre-application processes. And I suppose that has created the understanding that we have a bit of a vacuum. And we just wanted to ensure that we could, as I said, set out some, at least some minimum criteria. For example, as it stands, you know, operators would say, well, you don't need to have affordable housing or a contribution to affordable housing, which we think is wrong. Because our affordable housing policy talks about residential units, not dwellings. Very, very purposefully, you know, very purposefully it says that. So we just want to make sure that we set out some of those principles to ensure that we're not faced with having to deal with a planning application with no, no guidance or policies or benchmarks and to leave the planning committee in a situation where it is a complete vacuum of guidance and policy.
Yeah, it's interesting, it's the first time you've mentioned pre-application. We were told earlier on that we hadn't had anything. And so we are responding to something, even if it's not an official application, which is interesting. But you then went on to say, well, we should lay down minimum standards, and I think everybody here agrees we should, except we don't. So can we not take it away and add to it and put it out again in the new year?
Well, I dispute that. I would say that actually we are setting out some standards and they are set out in the, in the annex of, of the document. As I said, we are unable to provide space standards in the way that we would have done through normal dwellings, because we use the nationally described space standards, which are used across the country. There are no nationally prescribed space standards for this type of, of, of living. So I think that from what I've seen elsewhere across the country, we are setting out a similar expectation within the limitations that we have in a, in a vacuum. And without commissioning a whole load of evidence, which I don't think is proportionate, I think you're right there councillor Whitehead, in terms of, you know, the, the need or demand for this, I don't think we should be going off and doing a whole load of expensive evidence based work. We feel that this provides the council or provides guidance that sets out those minimum standards. And the, the consultation is primarily going to be focused, I suspect, on the operators actually responding to this consultation, rather than, you know, general public.
Councillor Pully.
Sorry, a quick one. I just wanted to query this question of this not coming back here before it goes to Cabinet. The purpose of this board is to recommend policy to Cabinet. Cabinet is not empowered to agree policy in the, in the, in the way that we're talking about. This is new and I'm in favour of it, unlike councillor Whitehead, but I am in favour of it. I think it does fill a, potentially fill a gap of young people battling with the rental market and the market value. But, but that's not, that's a different argument. I, I think that this conversation here has illustrated, we have lots of ideas, lots of thoughts, we're glad that, I'm personally glad it's going out to consultation, but I would want it to come back through here in order, before it goes to Cabinet. That would be my proposal. I don't know whether I have a second.
Just discussing with my learned colleagues here, would you like to give an update or Jeremy?
Yep, just conferring with my senior colleagues. Yes, that can come back here.
Do we feel we're in a position now to head to the recommendations of it going out to consultation?
Chair, shall I make the...
Yes, please, thank you councillor Sosian.
The, the recommendations, in fact, don't include it coming back here afterwards or going to Cabinet. But the recommendations are, the board approved the co-living planning advice note to be published for consultation and it was said that this would be coincident with the... And it was said that this will be coincident with the local plan consultation. The board delegates responsible to the director of Sustainable Communities in consultation with a cabinet member, the greener Chelmsford, and I hope the opposition people would be advised to make any minor changes required in the co-living planning advice prior to the publication of a consultation. And as we note, the recommendation is that the updated version of this comes back to the Policy Board. And yeah, I think, as the officer said, there is a need for something, but without it being too detailed, covering everything that would require evidence. So I'm making those recommendations.
Thank you councillor Soshin. Can I have a show of hands for those that agree for it to go out to consultation as per those recommendations? That's good, I think that's everyone, but I think I'm supposed to ask anyone opposed and anyone abstaining, but that's zero, zero, zero. Thank you very much, Jeremy, for that report and for answering those questions. I appreciate it's an interesting discussion to get through. We'll be heading now to the Sheila report, which I believe is being introduced by Liz Harris-Best.
But before, before, no, no, sorry Chair, I should have just set that up beforehand. But just, just before we go to the presentation, and I know you're probably all sick of hearing my voice, so that would be a welcome relief, I'm sure. So can I just draw the board's attention to the green sheet? Which has an additional recommendation, which we would have normally had. I'm afraid that is a mission for, a mission for such a complex and lengthy item. We would normally had a second, a recommendation in relation to any minor changes. We have noticed in the, in the site performance summaries in page, in part six of the, of the Sheila, there's some symbols text that have gone in, sort of a bit of hieroglyphic text that's gone in there that's kind of been randomly generated while it's been converted from Excel to Word, so apologies for that. So we will need to remedy that. Also, site CFS 83, which is on page 417. I'm afraid, I think it's 811 pages, so, but that has an incorrect rag rating. It has a red rag rating and it should be amber. So that is CFS 83 on page 417. The scoring hasn't changed since the last publication. We were just trying to work out why the Excel spreadsheet had made it red. And we can't see the reason why that has happened, so that is incorrect. So those will need to be corrected before publication and hence why that additional recommendation is being placed on, on the green sheet. So I'll hand over to Liz Harris-Best now to go through the presentation on, on this item. Thank you, Chair.
Good evening, members. So I think you've probably seen quite a few of these now and are familiar with the length of them, unfortunately, as well as the detail and the way that, that we present them. This, just to clarify, this version, this latest report, is one that was conducted following the consultation on the preferred options local plan. So at each stage of the local plan consultation, we go through an exercise of opening up the call for sites and closing that down, even though it's open all year round. But it's, it's obviously just that opportunity at each stage of the consultation for people to submit new sites or amendments to their sites. And then the updated report that you see incorporates those amendments and as well as any criteria changes that might affect the sites that were already form part of the previous assessments that we've reported to you. So yeah, just to say, so this will be labelled our Autumn 2024 report and it relates to new sites and amended sites that were submitted to us in spring and summer of this year. I've got to get this working before I can. It's not working. Is it me? Oh, there, I was just, sorry, not, not as instant as I like. Sorry about that, I might have to do that for it. So this is a sort of an overview of the process again. So apologies if you, you've heard this fairly recently because obviously during the local plan review, the frequency in which we produce these is more regular than you're used to. And ordinarily, outside of a review period, it's every year, it's once a year. And you're now seeing it probably more often than that. So just, just a quick overview of what the strategic housing and employment land availability assessment is, which I will call the Sheila because I cannot spit that out, I'm afraid, on, on every reference that we've got to it on these slides. So it's a technical assessment of housing and employment land available within the Chelmsford area. We prepare it because we're required to do so under the MPPF. We need to look at the housing employment land that's available. We have a framework to assess that land. And that framework is dictated within the MPPF, a certain remit in terms of we look at whether it's suitable, available and achievable for development over a time period of up to and over five years. I'm struggling to use my own computer here now. So the purpose is obviously just a high-level assessment. It, it can't be more, you know, any more detailed than it is, otherwise it would be even longer than it is. Of the likely development potential of sites that are submitted to us by landowners and developers. We have developed the criteria from national as well as local planning policy to assess the sites, to identify their characteristics and their strengths and constraints and therefore establish their likely develop, their developability as well as their deliverability. What the Sheila doesn't do, and we emphasise this every time, I know, but it's really critical for everybody to understand it, is it doesn't allocate sites for development. So it's a high-level assessment of sites that are submitted to us from developers that, or landowners that say, here's some land you could consider for development. Obviously, we take the Sheila and other evidence-based documents and we do use that. So it's an additional evidence-based document that forms part of our suite of evidence-based documents that we do use in the local plan review. And obviously, it can, we draw upon it in terms of when decisions are made of where to allocate future development land. The outcomes of the decisions obviously then, obviously feed into, feed into a much bigger process. And, and quite clearly, it doesn't allocate a planning permission of any, of any form at all. If I just move on to the next slide. Oh, there we are, I've got an angle there, I think, I need to just prioritise. So yeah, there were in this sort of spring/summer period only nine new sites that were actually submitted to us. And then we had six amendments to sites that had previously been assessed. So they're effectively updated by those amendments. And then with some of the criteria changes, there's obviously the existing sites that we have to then run through the whole process of the assessment where there are any criteria changes. Online, there's just a map, it's obviously not particularly useful probably to you here, but it's available on our website anyway, where you can expand, go in, zoom in and you can see the locations. It's much more interactive than the, the PDF versions that we used to have, which I think was much, much more of a struggle to, to view. To avoid double counting, sites are discounted. So there can be multiple submissions on a site and 75 have been removed on that basis or discounted on land crossing over. And 33 on this occasion have been removed because they've either been allocated or have approved planning permission since we last went through this exercise. And then there were 42 sites that wholly lied within another Sheila submission. So they again are discounted, so we don't, we don't double count. Just the next slide is just an overview of the process. Dan might have the magic touch. So just some background on, on how we actually do the assessment. There is obviously details in the methodology section of the report. So each assessment begins with a review of the criteria and just to assure it reflects the most up-to-date local and national policy as well as legislation and to ensure that the assessment remains robust and transparent. Obviously, this has happened against the backdrop of the current MPPF, not any of the proposed changes in the MPPF. That's not, not relevant to this assessment at this time. We go through this process of the call for sites, as I've talked about before. We do have an online facility that enables promotion all year round and we have set cut-off points. It's just we're in a more fluid period when we're in review, just to make sure we capture all those consultation periods. Then submitted sites, we vet them, make sure they're okay to including the assessment and we've got all the information that we can to do that. And then it's just a case of going through the assessment process. So I think this is just a reminder, I think you've all seen this diagram before, but it's a, it's a very process-driven assessment that, that we follow each time. And the next slide just talks to you about what that assessment process is. And so the assessment does obviously have some scoring against a range of criterion which are fully listed in, in the criteria note appended to the report. We look at a range of features, including the type of use, the site is being promoted for. And then we'll assess them against a different range of elements like public transport provision, flood risk, land classification, legal issues, viability issues. It is, this is why it's so long, I'm afraid, there's a broad range of criteria, criterion that we need to consider. And the answers to the scoring just help us to try and assess against those three kind of different categories, suitability, availability and achievability that we're required to do by the National Planning Framework. And then we produce a viability assessment to sit alongside the criteria and that gauges the economic viability of a development typologies and it guides the outcome of the achievability element of the assessment. That viability assessment is linked to the one that's done for our local plan. So it takes those assumptions in the latest published version of that and it applies it each time we conduct one of these assessments and feeds into the achievability assessment element of the Sheila itself. The next, sorry, the next slide, Dan, just takes you through some of the changes that we, tweaks, I think, rather than changes that have occurred in this year's assessment. We, we have made some minor changes, really their inconsistencies and more ambiguity that we had in the interpretation of the criteria and the scoring of the sites in the previous assessment. So there are amendments, so we had an amendment to the definition of key services. It was a clarification that we were actually referring to mainstream, non-selective, state-funded primary and secondary schools, rather than, we had a very broad definition of primary and secondary schools before. Just when, this is where we're measuring distances to certain facilities. Just to be clear that obviously, we're only going to be measuring to those non-selective ones. That's where we're trying to measure our baseline from. We've also, this time round, included ancient and veteran trees within the definition of local protected natural features. And this, and amended the criterion just to give a zero point to a site that's either got any of these features within the site boundary or is within 15 metres of the boundary of an ancient woodland. That's just to make sure that sites that include them on sort of veteran ski, veteran trees are scored down on this particular criterion. Doesn't mean they can be excluded completely, it just means we're recognising that there's a constraint and that constraint is reflected in the scoring. And then finally, we've created a new internal definition of adjacent to in the context of the designated heritage assets. This is actually just a feedback, I think it just shows you that we do take on board comments that are made to us. And there were some issues with the interpretation of adjacent that I think have been applied inconsistently in the past assessment. And where we've had a feedback from landowners that have pointed to that and we've taken that on board and sought to rectify that. And we've just changed the way that we assess sites on the boundary or directly opposite to a designated heritage site. Because it's a big assessment, sometimes we have several officers doing it, so we just need to make sure the notes and the criteria are followed as best as possible and consistently by everyone who's doing the assessment. So those are fairly minor in the scheme of the actual broader assessment itself. The next slide just, just says how we present it to you probably. So we have, oh, I'm glad you're having problems here. I thought it was going too smoothly over there, I mean, it was just me. So we'll get, we'll get there in a minute, but I'll carry on talking because I don't want to pause for long. So towards the end of the assessment, it's all in the appendices, as you'll see it. We produce a site profile for each site and that's known as the site performance summary. It sets out how it's scored against each criteria. It's attributed this rag rating, the red, amber and green, which is, is, isn't a definitive rating, it's, it's more of a visual guide to us really about how well the, the sites performed. To give us, it just gauges the level of constraints that have been identified with obviously red on one end of the scale indicating perhaps more significant, potentially non-mitigable constraints. And then green meaning that says minimum, minimal constraints and there's probably high prospects of achieving policy compliance on a site which has got that colour in its, in the corner of its site summary. The ratings again, they don't determine whether a planning permission would be granted for a site and they don't determine whether it's going to be allocated in the local plan. I can't emphasise that enough, it's an evidence-based document and it's a high-level assessment. So the, one of the, we're nearly there, you'll be pleased to know. The one, the penultimate slide, the next one, is the key findings of the report. And it just shows some of the statistics from the assessment. They are presented in the report, the non-technical summary and, and the assessment statistics document. There we are. The first table shows you how the sites are broken down by approved use, with residential being the most popular of all the uses that's submitted to us, followed by mixed and then employment. The second table shows the rag ratings for the sites. And then the yield is the total number of dwellings that the site we've assessed can accommodate. That's not necessarily what might have been submitted to us. And then it just shows you some of the overviews in terms of how many of the green and the yellow sites we've assessed this time round. And the overview, oh, sorry, the overall yield for the dwellings that might be created from any of the green and the yellow rag-assessed sites that have scored fairly well in, in the assessment as it's been devised by us. And then of course, there's a higher number of amber and reds. That doesn't again mean that they can't ever be developed, it's just saying that they've got moderate constraints and probably more severe constraints that, that would require mitigation. So that's the high-level output from the assessment. The next steps, which is a final slide, Dan, is the, obviously, following, in addition to the, to the green sheet, that we'll obviously be asking to, for, what we'd like to do is publish the report together with the findings and the other, and obviously any other evidence-based documents will be used to guide determination of the next stage of the local plan, the pre-submission consultation, so it will feed into that process. It's why you're seeing this now, obviously in advance of the pre-submission document, because this will inform that. And it obviously is to determine whether we, you know, it answers that question about what our appropriate land supply across the local plan period, you know, have we got that, where we got that from? It will feed into that. The next steps would be for us to publish this report on, we have the Sheila webpage. Normally what happens is we just take down the last report and we update it with this report because it's the latest available and it has the most up-to-date information. And that includes the interactive map that's been produced that shows the locations and makes it a little bit more user-friendly, we hope. So it's recommended that the board notes that we've done this assessment and we author, and authorised publication subject to the green sheet, as Jeremy referenced. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Liz, that's really helpful. Did you want to come in, Jeremy?
Just, just finally, to just.
Just finally, to just say that, as Liz said, this is the first opportunity to do a consistent and objective strategic assessment of the sites, and that is all. That's all it does. And as Liz said, it's not there to identify sites, it's one of, I call it, one of the ingredients of the cake. The cake is the local plan, it's just one of those ingredients that we look at to then determine what sites we need to bring forward as part of the local plan. I know you've heard, I'll say this on numerous occasions, but when we see all of these sites on a map, you know, sometimes 50,000 homes, you know, we see these huge numbers and these huge sites, sometimes that can be a bit overwhelming. It is the first stage of assessment, and these are sites that are being promoted by landowners and promoters. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I have any comments, questions, or feedback? councillor Fuller.
The lack of renewable power generation sites, is that indicative of we're saturated or no-one's interested, or?
I can only take it that there isn't the interest to provide them, but I can only assume that's probably a land value issue in terms of what's the outcome of different uses are, and that's why residential is, you know, the main submission that we receive. I'm not sure how we would sort of influence that, we just, it's a generic call for sites. It'd be interesting, I suppose, over time to monitor that and see if that number does grow. But yeah, it's just a reflection of what's, yeah, the demand out there, I think, for, from a commercial perspective, probably.
Oh, sorry councillor Matthew, oh, sorry councillor O'Brien.
Okay, I've got some observations, you probably might not be able to answer them all now, but I've been through it, and I did go through the 7445 PDF, and I was just about to have a rant on that, and then I realised it wasn't that, I missed that, I probably, but we'll forego that one. However, I can't speak for the whole of Chelmsford, all those sites, because I don't know the area, you know, but I do know my own area, Southwood and Ferrars. We have three sites, Southwood and Ferrars, 20 Shella A3, 21 Shella 4, and 21 Shella 9, pages 637, 641, 644 respectively. They are, and I'm not including the green sites that have already gone through the master plan process, because we've been through that exercise. These sites respectively, and they're on the land that we say it's on the field up to Hyde Hall, except for the small one of 30, which is a little bit round the corner. But for the main 1,100 new yields, this is the big field coming to Woodham, immediate left at the BP garage, and you're on the road to Hyde Hall, it's that field there. These yields, 248 and 862, they score 117 and 108. Their vehicle access scores, and this is where my first concern is, it's not always what you've done, but the methodology, I don't think, is now suitable for getting this right. And I appreciate what you said, it's not picking the sites, but it starts somewhere, and it starts here. So it, for me, it's, you know, we've got a vehicle access on one of the sites at three and a strategic road of four, and then for the larger site, we've got a vehicle access of five and strategic road not applicable. You know, if you go to Woodham, there's no way Southwoodham can support any more sites. So how these sites can be green, when we know that we've already got another 3,742 already in the yellow category, come to that in a minute, so we've got now 5,000, just under, yield in Southwood and Ferrars, which has not been through a master plan, so this is extra, and we're saying that these sites are green. From a road point of view alone, it can't be. So I understand your methodologies, I went through it, but it's not delivering what the people need, because it's pretty obvious that anyone who's been to Woodham, you just can't do that. There's just, unless someone's going to build a new, brand-new road through to the A130 for the back of the 800 site, it ain't going to work. So I'm now questioning the methodology, saying it's not fit for purpose, assuming that you've done it how you've said you've done it and you've balanced it up. But then I started, so that's my first concern, why I'm really struggling to support this tonight, then I started looking through other sites, and I noticed...
Councillor O'Brien, so I'm wondering, would it be helpful for you to answer that question?
I don't mind.
Yeah, and then we'll come back for the other questions.
So what this assessment doesn't do is deal with the capacity on the highway network, because that would be a technical assessment that would be provided by the Highway Authority. It's literally a visual assessment, because obviously some sites might be submitted to us, that have no physical form of road access, or they're not adjacent to a road, they have no path, they're like landlocked, if you like, they're like backland sites. So the way that we are assessing this is absolutely that really high-level visual assessment of the road access adjoining a site. It's nothing to do with the capacity of the road network, that, I must emphasise that, that would be dealt with in terms of other evidence-based documents that, well then, if you were to take one of these sites and we were then saying, as part of the local plan preparation, I am, these sites are green, let's have a look at these, or they're yellow, obviously that's not looked at on its own, it's looked at with those other evidence-based documents, which will be informing us about where we've got problems on the road network and where there are capacity constraints. And so it wouldn't matter if this was assessed as either a green or a yellow by this very high-level assessment in terms of its, the physicality of the location of the site to the highway. What would then matter is where we've got capacity on the highway in another evidence-based document. That's why this document is not a standalone document in terms of any form of assessment of the site, either as, if you were looking at it in terms of a planning application coming forward on this site, or as a potential allocated site in the local plan process itself.
So could I come in and just ask a clarifying point? So if I was recruiting for an administrator, and I had 3,000 people apply, this is the first sift, and it doesn't mean I'll end up with 3,000 administrators, I'll probably end up with one or two. So this is that first sift before the shortlist, almost?
That's absolutely right. And just going back to my analogy of the cake, if you don't mind, because I think it's actually quite fitting in this case. You know, the traffic modelling is showing that Southwood and Ferrars, as Liz was just saying, the traffic modelling is saying there is no capacity in highway terms. So in some regards, just because the site is available, someone's promoting it, and it's next to a road, i.e. you can get into it, it doesn't mean that it's acceptable for development, because the traffic, other evidence, like the traffic modelling, is showing that the road network isn't, is not able to accommodate any more growth at Southwood and Ferrars. And we've said that in the preferred options of the local plan.
Thank you, Jeremy. Councillor O'Brien.
Thank you for that, yeah, that helps me get my mind around it. It doesn't, for me, cover, I'll cover the RAG status in a minute, but it helps me get my mind around it pretty good. But let's move on to now, so I've said my bit on the first part, you've kind of given 70%, made me happy, there's still 30% in me that's not. If we now look at between the sites, I've got, you know, 17 Shella 23, this is a site that has a yield of 207, a score of 107, so it's one less than our big site in Woodham. Five and NA, exactly the same traffic, and I'm just using traffic, you know, with this now referring to your whole scoring matrix, yet it has an amber classification. And then 17 Shella 18, a yield of 262, which is near our 248 site, has a score of 108, which is identical to the score in Southwoodham, yet you've classified it red. So we've got your scoring matrix that is saying, the scores are the same, that's your evidence base, yet one's green, one's red. I find that very hard to take to my residents who look at it and say, well, here's the green, here's the red. The green are obviously the ones they're going to look at, they're not going to look at the reds. How do I take that to my residents? Because at the moment, I can't. So that's my second point, I don't know if you want to answer that one, and I've come to the last one.
Can we do it that way, Chair, because then I won't get lost either?
Absolutely.
No, that's fine. So there is a complicated area within the scoring, or slight complication, in that some of the constraints are described as capped constraints, and those constraints are underlined. Now, one of the national capped constraints is obviously if it's in the green belt, for example. So one of the other criterion within the suitability assessment is the green belt, it can be like the SSIs that exist, so there are certain things that are out which are capped constraints, which means that it might score overall higher, but it's RAG rating, which is going to be red or amber, it will be worse, because it's one of these underlying constraints that we consider have to be capped, because they are more difficult potentially to overcome, and therefore they perform a different function within the criteria assessment. It's the way we've operated the assessment for quite some time. So it does say at the end of the criteria note, I think if you can scan to the end, it talks about the percentages that will lead to an amber, red, or green rating, unless it's got a capped constraint identified on that site. So if it hasn't got the maximum score on a capped constraint, and I'm happy to do offline, go through these individually with you, if it gives you that 30% to get you to 100% for your assurance that it's happened right, and the assessment is okay, because it is always, you know, there is room for human error in some of this. But that's why it's not a straightforward red, yellow, or green, and a same-output score. There are capped constraints within the criteria that perform a different role.
Thank you for that, yep, I'm happy with your explanation. The kind of the final area here is, you know, everyone in the industry understands what a RAG status is, red, amber, green, yet we have this yellow classification, and a cynic in me would say that the yellow classification seems to be to put the houses in Southwood and Ferrars into a category so they're not part of the amber ones, which form far more of the central brownfield sites within city-centric areas. That's the cynic in me. What I've also noticed on the yellow, because if you look at the yellows, we've got a yellow of 3,742 homes in Southwoodham in excess, and the rest of them are token piecemeal by in comparison. So I'm a bit, yeah, you know, ragged to me, like you called it when you actually went through the red, amber, green, I think this yellow category is, you know, it does bring Southwoodham more favourable than amber. When you look at the scoring criterias for a lot of the amber sites in Chelmsford and the yellow, they're virtually similar, and your constraint argument, I get, will work for red, you know, go from green to red, I get it, but the constraint in arguments between this yellow and amber, I'm still not convinced. And the final thing I noticed is, when you put the summary up, you had 19 sites under yellow, a yield of 2,353, yet, and I tried to raise this last year, but it was my first ever meeting, and I didn't get my words out right. You showed it tonight, 19 sites, yellow, 2,353 yield, yet CFS 282, a yellow site in Southwoodham, actually has a yield of 3,742. So somewhere, the maths don't add up. And when I saw that, I start to think, well, what else has been missed? I haven't got the time to put this, convert it all into Excel and put, you know, pivot tables through it and do the logic, but I've noticed these discrepancies. I'm struggling to sell this to my residents in Southwood and Ferrars, as is, because we've been through this exercise before, and, you know, it was quite confrontational before I joined this council, and I'm trying not to do that, but I'm still struggling to sell this to my residents, because some of this evidence base does feel that it's not syncing up with each other. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, I'll let you respond to that while I whisper.
I mean, the main function, I think, of the green and the yellow rating is to pick up those that are deliverable across a shorter time period, and the yellow is the developable, which is beyond the five years effectively. So it's less about constraints and more about the time in which they can come forward. So that's, it's a detail that helps us, because obviously we, as a planning authority, also need to think about maintaining a five-year land supply, as well as having enough sites across the local plan period. So that's the main function of it for us. I suppose it's interesting to hear it from maybe a resident's point of view, that it maybe doesn't make so much sense, and then it can perhaps lead to, you know, concerns or suspicions that there might be some other meaning to it. So maybe we need to take that feedback on board and try and explain that nuance slightly better, but that's one of the main functions of the yellow, if you like, and it's probably more my recall that it's easier for me to say RAG and then say red, amber, green, that I don't, you know, mention the yellow. But it's clear that we're talking about developable and deliverable, and in planning, planning in MPPF terms, there are different time scales that we're required to assess it across.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, Jeremy.
I just wanted to pick up the point. Well, first of all, I mean, we've been honing this methodology for years, I'm afraid, and the last round of changes, we went through the Planning Advisory Service to get an outsider's, you know, an outside critical friend, really, basically, to look at that. So we took on board some of those recommendations. So I just wanted to assure the boards that it isn't just us kind of, you know, on the hoof making this up. This is, you know, been undertaken over a number of years, and, you know, checking in with an independent body to ensure that our criteria is fit for purpose. So I just want to make sure that the board's aware of that. In terms of those totals, we will check those, so apologies if they didn't add up, and we will make sure that the assessment is correct. So if there was some transposition in the presentation, then apologies for that, but the assessment is correct. And then finally, I think I understand what you're saying about residents' understanding, but what we've got to remember is that this is a technical piece of evidence base that supports the local plan. What residents really are interested in is what allocations are coming forward in the local plan, because that's the statutory document. And all of those, I'll use it again, all of those ingredients come together to then have a consultation that we put to our residents to try and for them to understand where we've got to. But I do take your point that some residents will want to work back all through those stages and understand the evidence that's got us to that point, but this isn't a document that we should be, that residents should be using to determine, you know, where those allocations are, because as we said right from the beginning, it's a technical assessment that helps us alongside a whole wrath of other technical assessments, as you know, that then allow us to determine which sites we choose to be allocated in the local plan.
Thank you, Jeremy. I think you've mentioned the cake so many times, I will be very disappointed if we don't get cake by the time the local plan is finalized. I think that should be brought to that policy board. I do see your, and I just wanted to make sure I'm understood. So the recommendation of this is to, et cetera, et cetera, authorised publication, pending the green sheet which has identified some errors, but also pending now, Jeremy, you reviewing some of those queries that have come through, and Paul, you're signing them off, is that?
Yeah, we're very happy to go through any specific sites that any councillors have. Councillor O'Brien, we're very happy to do that. And likewise, we will effectively, we need to publish this before we go to the next stage of the local plan. I mean, that's the bottom line, really, because this just sets out the baseline for the next I mean, that's the that's the bottom line really, because this just sets out the baseline for the next stage, really.
Thank you, Jeremy. Oh, Paul, yeah.
Yeah, can I just say, Chair, that any changes made to um this document and previous ones that are done in the delegation, we all always report back to Policy Board, normally by email what those changes are, but they tend to be of a um sort of typo type changes rather than anything significant.
Councillor James.
Yeah, I just wonder, as the MPPF has gone out for consultation and gone back and we believe it's going to come through with the results before Christmas, is it likely to affect all this work that's been done?
A very good question. Um, and the answer to that is, at present, we are proposing to go through the transitional arrangements. So we'll be using the existing MPPF, not the new MPPF. However, we're still awaiting government's confirmation of what those transitional arrangements are. So we are slightly at risk at the moment. Um, we are hoping that those transitional arrangements will be sensible. And I know a lot of other councils made those those points to government. We are in the budget. It's still said that the MPPF will be published this year. So we will wait and see, hopefully not Christmas Eve.
Be technically true, though. Um, I'm sorry, Councillor James, of course you can.
Just one point of clarification, if that might, Chair. Um, when things change, particularly flood issues, because I think we're now looking at one in three 30 years instead of 100, do you revisit all those that you've already done and said the standard is?
Yeah, the um, so what we do at the start of the assessment is just to check what our mapping layers have been updated. So um any flood risk map, you know, the implications of that, because we do sit out in the methodology where we get our sources from, but it's it is pretty much a desktop assessment. Um, and we're relying on our colleagues in IT updating those layers. And so, yeah, we would, um, if there's been a change in any layer on that mapping that affects one of the criteria, then we have to, um, or criteria, then we have to repeat the exercise for each of the sites that are submitted to make sure that that's brought up to date um with the latest available information that we have.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Pooley.
One observation based on councillor O'Brien's comments. It would be helpful, I think, if the summary or the long, long list of all of these things was somehow divided by ward. Because I I don't have any any particular, I mean, I I learned early on in my in my council incarnations that this was a document, you responded to residents by saying, don't worry about it. Uh, and I think that's true. But of course, the very existence of a rag, of a rag notification means that residents who see it will worry about it and so will councillors. But I think that it is right to say that this is a very technical document and we have to trust that this, that it produces the evidence base that's necessary. Uh, but I think that some some ability for us just to hone down a little bit would be quite, quite handy. The other thing I wanted to say was back on the highways point. Surely there's an argument for having the highways capacity being a capped constraint. I mean, simple, let's let's think about the planning inspector, God bless him, for a minute, who's going to be faced anyway with a whole variety of incoming this, that and the others. He's going to be faced with a new MPPF and people arguing that we should be taking this, that and the other into account. But it seems to me that for this purpose, which is a regular ongoing assessment that is in danger of producing, I want to say red flags, and I don't mean that, in danger of producing unwelcome and unnecessary resident panic, then if we could make the highways capacity a capped constraint, that might be quite helpful next time you look at the way forward.
Sorry, I mean, we're not looking at capacity in this assessment. It's a desktop assessment and the capacity is not within our remit and not within our ability to make that assessment. So I don't think we could complete this assessment if we included the capacity on the highway network. That's why we have other, we appoint experts to do that assessment on our behalf. It's the simplistic kind of vehicle access, which I think is what was alluded to, is that visual access is a capped constraint in that if you don't have it, but it's certainly not capacity isn't something we um would deal with in this assessment. It's just too, it's an area of expertise that we don't have. Um, and that's why we're at pains to just say it over and over again for fear of boring members, that this is not a document that we use in isolation. And it is that very much that's step one. And the layers of evidence-based documents that you know, because you've seen them over the years, that we either produce or we procure all come into Jeremy's cake that he keeps sort of talking about and and referencing. Um, you know, this is your baking powder, if you like. It's not, you know, it's not even your flour, it's not a large part of that. It's it's just that start of that process. Um, and I think probably what you advise your constituents is, you know, a fair summary as it is. Um, I'm not sure that we do wards, where we used to produce the maps um on the area basis, we were hoping that for members, the the shortcut to this is to just, is to use that interactive map on the website, identify your area. You then can zoom into a reference. And then that reference, you can just go to the site summary and they're in obviously the order in the years in which they've been assessed, should provide, or you can just do that search function, your ability to look at those sites individually. Councillor O'Brien's clearly not sold on that response. Yeah, I think I'm just, I mean, if the map, I don't know how we can kind of improve um the accessibility of the document, really. Obviously, we're open to suggestions because it is something that we're trying over time, we've changed and tried to improve. I think the problem that we struggle with is it's a high-level assessment, but it's still quite complex and it's still quite, it's so many factors that we're having to take into account. Well, we we are, um, I'm, I'm, I was going to talk to colleagues in IT about, um, you know, the improvements that we can make to what is a massive Excel document. So, you know, we'll take, we'll take that on board and see, you know, that that's a summary, perhaps at the next stage, if that's okay with members, um, the how we can show or present this information to you, particularly in terms of your areas of interest, perhaps more user-friendly way. Um, and that will be one of our, or one of my takeaways from this meeting.
Chair, I I in order, I think this is all moving away from what we're trying to do is to recommend this, Sheila. The discussion like this should go from members to the officers. Um, the technical, if they, you know, if they need to have um um explanations, um, they should go to officers and and seek them. Uh, there is a lot of work in this of, I'm worried about adding to their work um in this. And I would like just merely to recommend that we go forward with this with possibly the corrections, Chair. And I would do that with your permission without, you know, having a detailed discussion of things that should be offline, that they may want this to happen um in in future offline. Officer, members making recommendations for changes offline. But it's not to do with recommending this particular Sheila, Chair, and I'd like to do that now.
Um, I think before we do that, I did want to recognise the recommendation is for this to go out to publication. And the feedback that we've been given is how do we make this more accessible for us as councillors and for our constituents to understand the document? I did fellow, well, I did, it's very difficult to navigate. And I do recognise on the interactive map, it would be much easier. However, there would be an element of going site by site on the interactive map rather than filtering by ward. Is that something not in this iteration, maybe, that could be considered going forward?
Um, absolutely. Um, I take on board, you know, members' comments here. Um, and um, we will look at that at the next stage, yes. I mean, it's it's a spreadsheet and we can filter. And um, it's just, um, we just want to get this this stage done. And we will ensure that we look at different ways of presenting it. But just remember, it is a technical document, although, you know, and we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be sort of promoting this too far as being the document that chooses the sites. You've heard me say that.
I agree completely. We won't end up with 3,000 administrators and my favourite cake is lemon for future. Um, if there's no further queries or no further feedback, I would like to move forward to the recommendation.
Yeah, so I'll make the recommendation to note the Strategic Housing and Employment Land Availability Assessment, Sheila. The Autumn 2024 Report, an authorised publication subject to possible corrections for numbers. And then there's the um second point, that the board delegates responsibility to the Director of Sustainable Communities in consultation with a cabinet member for greener Chelmsford and advising the opposition spokesman to make any changes necessary to this um report prior to um publication, prior, uh, yeah, prior to publication.
Did you, sorry, I missed, did that include the green sheet?
Yeah.
Yes. Um, can we have a show of hands? Are we happy for this to be approved on that basis? Yep. And can I have a show of hands for those who do not agree for it to go forward on that basis? And a show of hands of anybody who abstains? Thank you very much. So we'll move over to the third item on the agenda, which requires technical input. It looks like Dan's going to fix things. Um, Anglia Ruskin University, the strategic master plan, Chelmsford. The reports being introduced by Sally Rogers or possibly Jeremy? No, straight to Sally.
Good evening, members. Thank you. No, okay. So um the purpose of this item is for Policy Board to recommend the ARU master plan to Cabinet for approval. Um, the master plan relates to the Chelmsford Rivermead campus only. Um, so the ARU have produced a master plan because it's a policy requirement of the Chelmsford local plan. And the relevant policy there is on the screen, which is policy DM22, um, which cites the university specifically. Okay, so the master plan, and this is the journey to the stage we're at now. The master plan has developed over quite a long period. Um, we first met with the ARU in about 2019, um, when they were developing their first draft document. Um, the ARU then held some public exhibitions at their campus, at the Rivermead Campus in 2020. Um, this was for the public and also included staff and students' input into the document. In 2023, um, the formal submission was made to the City Council um for the master plan document. And we formally consulted on that document in the same way that we would do for a planning application. So we consulted relevant consultees, um, site notices and the like. Um, following that consultation, um, in 2024 in August, we received an amended document which related to the feedback mainly from the highways authority. Um, we then had a members briefing just last month. And obviously, we're now at Policy Board. And if Policy Board recommend it, then the next stage would be for Cabinet to approve the document. So this is the last page of the master plan document. And a key point I think that I need to raise here is that the master plan is a very high-level document. Um, and it does not provide the same level of detail that you'd expect to see in a planning application. And that's a really important point. Um, the detail will come later as part of individual planning applications as they arise on the site. Um, the document is very much a framework of intent rather than a programme of development phases. So any one of these could come forward in a different number of stages or phases. Um, the reason for this is that the ARU have explained to us quite clearly that the education sector is actually quite fast-changing. Um, it's often unpredictable and it can change from year to year. Um, so they're very keen, the ARU were very keen to make sure that the plan, the master plan was suitable for them and it was flexible enough so that it doesn't frustrate their direction of travel in the future. Um, the university is, as you know, a really important institution in the city. So we were very keen to work with them and to support the master plan. Um, and it's a plan that suits both them but also us in terms of providing a workable framework, um, which would comply with the local plan policy. So I'm just picking out a few of the areas of the master plan here, just quite quickly. So all the areas here shown in blue are the potential development zones. So they don't show the shapes of the buildings. Um, and they're not providing detail at this stage on the intended use of those buildings or their form or their design. Um, the height is listed in the master plan as between three and five storeys, which is consistent with the other buildings on the site. Um, and as I've said, the idea is to provide a framework to show the spaces on the site that would be likely to be developed, and those spaces that would be likely to be kept and those spaces that um the ARU wish to enhance. So in in terms of enhancements, um, the green spaces on the site are really important to the um ARU campus. Um, the areas here shown in red, these are the areas where the public realm enhancements are proposed. And they're mainly to improve the pedestrian cycling experience and the environment for the students on the site. Um, as I'm sure you're aware, if you've been to the site, it's a high-quality um site with landscaping is a is a key part of the um of the campus. So one of the key parts of the master plan and one of the key areas for change and improvement is to the very front of the site. Um, the master plan shows this area as a new, much more friendly pedestrian space. Um, it would become a much more welcoming space to the university and more of a civic space. Um, the university have highlighted um in this the need to work with the highways authority, and this was part of the feedback during the consultation, um, that they would have to work quite closely with the highways authority to make sure that the specific arrangements for the junctions would work and they'd be technically achievable. And they would use the right land, the highways land, et cetera. Um, but we feel that this is a really welcome improvement to the to the front of the site, which at the moment is quite vehicle-dominated. Um, so we feel this is a, this is a good improvement and to the front of the site. So in conclusion, um, we consider that this is a policy compliant document. It gives a good framework of intent for the university and it allows the university to grow and prosper, which is really important for the city. And our recommendation, Chair, is for the master plan to be referred to Cabinet for approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that comprehensive update. I know that there have been some briefings that members have been able to attend to have that spoken to in more detail. Um, so, yeah, I think that's really helpful. Do we have any feedback or concerns or questions that we would like to raise off the back of this? Councillor O'Brien.
Sorry, I had one question. I couldn't quite see the detail. Does the development zone, the blue, include the provision? Or can they build student halls of residence in that? Or is it just educational buildings like lecture theatres and labs or something? Is is halls of residence part of that development zone?
If I go back, if I can, if I can use this to get back. It's quite slow. Um, but yes, it does. So part of the front of the site is the um existing Rivermead. I don't think I can get there. Um, yeah, if we can go back, if you go back to, keep going back. Okay, stop. So on the bottom left-hand side of the screen there, so the sort of U shapes. Um, so that is the existing, part of that is the existing student accommodation, which is actually quite dated now. And one of the um the aspirations of the university is to very much update that student accommodation. Um, it would be greater in number and it would be better in quality. So absolutely, that is part of the master plan proposal.
We did have a a question previous to this around if that blue area is part of the existing student accommodation and the plans are potentially to improve that. As we go through that transition, is there the risk that the university loses some student accommodation? And then that then spills out into the city centre?
So the proposal is to, as as I said, to improve and increase the um student accommodation on the site. So that would help in the longer term. on the site, so that would help in the longer term. What this document doesn't do is it doesn't provide specific time scales or project programmes, so that would be managed as part of a planning application. You would expect that the university wouldn't want to prejudice themselves, so they would ensure that they would manage the student accommodation and they would phase it, I would imagine, but again, that would come later as part of a detailed planning application.
Thank you very much. councillor Puley.
I accept that absolutely, this is a high-level document, but it goes into less detail than some of the master plans that we have been used to dealing, dealing with, I think, and recommending to Cabinet. And that's one example. The text, if there were text about the student accommodation, would probably say precisely what Sally just said, whereas there is no text around that, and so we're left with an uncertainty as to how student accommodation might be phased, we're left with uncertainty as to whether the eventual amount of student accommodation is going to overcome the existing situation, which is overspill into Rectory Lane and Rectory Road and all the rest of it, which takes up HMO accommodation elsewhere and overlaps with the need for nurses for accommodation. So I think in one sense, this master plan doesn't blow the university's trumpet enough. We're very proud of the university, and quite rightly so, I think. The master plan is a very excellent document, but I, but I'm not sure that somebody reading it would end up with a vision as to where, how we would get to where they want to get us and what the end product might be looking at, looked at. I mean, I'm in favour of it, and I'm not going to stand in the way of this recommendation, but I just think it, they can blow their trumpet more than they are doing, and they can be a bit more specific about when they expect things to happen.
Thank you. And I totally understand what you're saying, and this is something that we also requested from the ARU, but unfortunately, they're just not able to do that, because, as I said, it is a very fast-changing environment, and they don't have that projection to say, well, in this, in this year coming, we'll need X number of students, in the following year, we need that number of students. So, I mean, the master plan does say, it's on page 24, that, that the ability to at least offer a first-year place with on-campus is a real driving factor for recruitment to get students to go to university, and it's vitally important to them to also try and offer returning students, so second and third-year students to the university, and especially international students. So the document is trying to, to do exactly that in terms of offering greater quality and number of student spaces, but what it doesn't do is it doesn't say the quantum, and it doesn't give the phases, because they're not able to do that at this stage, and that's something that we did try, this is why it's been a very long drawn-out process, is we tried to get that information, but it's just not possible for the ARU to do that, so that's why it is a high-level document in that respect.
Sorry, Chair, this nevertheless comes to us with officers' recommendation as well as the ARU's hope.
Absolutely, it does, yes, yes, because we, we support the university and we've had to understand from them about, because like you say, many of the other master plans are much more specific, but they're, you can quantify what's going to happen, because you can quantify the number of houses on an allocated site, for example. So this is quite a different type of master plan, and it's, it's something that the ARU actually wanted in the local plan, so that they have this framework, and we're very supportive of what they've done, because we think it does give that statement of intent, and it does show the movement forward for the university.
Please ask the hospital to do the same.
We won't add that to the recommendations list. Are we ready to move to the recommendation stage?
Thank you, Chair. The Policy Board recommends to Cabinet that the master plan attached at Appendix One, if any changes arising from further recommendations be approved. The Policy Board delegate to the Director of Sustainable Communities in consultation with the Chair, Vice Chair and Cabinet Member for Sustainable Development to negotiate any final changes to the master plan ahead of its consideration by the Cabinet. I so propose.
Thank you. Do we have, sorry, by a show of hands, can we say who is in agreement to that proposal? Lovely, that's everyone, I don't think I need to do, no, lovely, fab. Okay, so that closes up the item. The last one that we have on the agenda is the work programme, and I can't remember, did we say it was going to be Dan, that was going to be taken this one?
Thank you, Chair. So the work programme is set out as the report you've seen, you probably also saw an email from me earlier with some meeting date changes. The bit to note on here is the local plan items will now go to the scheduled meeting we already had on the 16th of January, the meeting we had put in for the 17th of December won't be happening. The meeting on the 20th of March is being brought forward a week to the 13th of March, and the items that would have gone to January 2025 will be at the March meeting instead. I haven't got anything else on the work programme, I'm not sure if anyone else has.
Working groups.
Who's, who can do an update on the dates for the working groups?
For the homelessness and rough sleepers strategy, so an email went out today just trying to identify when the members of the working group are available and the officers, so we'll, we'll be able to fix that probably in the next week or so, but we'll have a date for the working group. And now we've got a little bit more time, so it'll probably be in January, rather than trying to squeeze it in between the end of consultation, November and before Christmas, so we'll probably have that working group in January.
And there's the water sports one.
So the waterways working group, we actually in discussion with the Environment Agency just this week to check on their progress. It all comes as no surprise to you that their progress is generally slow, so we're expecting the waterways working group's first, you know, meeting of its refreshed form probably in January now. Again, I think with the, you know, challenges we've got on the meeting schedule, it'd probably be, you know, no point in trying to get it in at the end of December, so January seems, so we're just about to canvass dates. Obviously, that meeting of the waterways working group involves external people as well, so we've got quite a lot of work to do to try and find a date that will, you know, be suitable for, for all the parties, but you should see something in the next week or so, if you're on the waterways working group, of course, you know.
I think that's probably all the items on the work programme. Do we have any other business? No? We can probably go home, thank you so much for joining, see you at full council and the next Policy Board meeting in January.